Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the school district of the city of Harper Woods. Today's date is January 21, 2014. Time is approximately 7:05. If everyone could please rise and recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take notes.
Yeah.
We have five members present, which does give us a quorum. Ms. Mahone and Mrs. Purnell are not here. We did hear from Mrs. Purnell. She has a prior commitment tonight. She will not be able to attend. We do have a... You may notice we're seated a little differently. We had an organizational meeting two weeks ago, and we elected new officers for this year, for 2014. Joe Quaker was selected and elected to be the vice president. Regina Williams is the treasurer.
Yeah.
And Mr. Keen, David Keen, is the secretary, and I am the president. So we moved around a little bit. Congratulations to all. We do have an agenda, a regular agenda, and not amended agenda. Do we have a motion to accept that agenda?
Motion.
Support.
Support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Agenda is approved, 5-0. That brings us to the first item on that agenda, which is the consent agenda, which includes minutes from our meetings of November 19th, December 3rd, and December 17th, all 2013, and January 7th. Two separate meetings that night, an organizational meeting and a workshop meeting. It also includes the expenditure reports for the month of December. And it also includes some personnel matters, overnight travel for Mr. Hopkins to the Casper Suite certification, Ms. Tyson for the Michigan Science Teacher Association, and recommendation for hire of Adore Ray Bruce as dance team coach, and Linda Weddington, lunchroom supervisor at Tyrone. Do any members wish to have any matters removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to accept, to approve, the consent agenda?
Motion.
Do we have support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The consent agenda is approved, 5-0. Correspondence? Mr. Keen?
Several emails that are automatically forwarded to board members.
Thank you. That brings us to 7.0, which are the district activities. We'll begin with Beacon. Ms. Gottsleben. You look eager tonight.
Well, one of the students told me today I looked like a judge. So I told him I was Judge Judy. Tough justice. Just like a judge today, Ms. Gottsleben. How little he knows it. That's what I do every day. Good afternoon... or good evening. I'm still in the afternoon. Well, I kind of want to brag a little bit about our math curriculum and what's going on. Although we're very challenged with new curriculum, and it's real complicated, and it's high level, you know, I have to say again that we're continuing to thrive at every grade level. We're not moving as fast as we need to, you know, getting the modules accomplished, but the ones that are getting done have created deep thinking already in the short time that we've done it. I've kind of bragged about it a couple other times when I got up here, but the teachers had a training last week with the strategic math solutions that we have been working with. And the one thing they visited last week was something called a performance task. Now, when you think of a performance task, it's exactly what you'll see on an S back, where it's multi-step. You know, you're given a pretty simple story problem. Well, in third grade, not so simple, but a story problem. And then the student has to attack it in a very strategic way. You know, we use the eight mathematical practices, and they're a little more complicated, but basically it's reasoning, critical thinking, and then being able to process what you did and kind of spit it out in your own words, you know, really make a deep understanding of it. So what the teachers were able to do was this trainer went into a classroom and basically modeled a performance task. And so with this teacher's class, their own children, and then they were able to bring these tasks, these papers back, and then they were able to score them. And there's about four levels from anywhere from an expert level to a novice. And I just, you know, I was able to sit in on these trainings, and after, you know, the teachers are very... A lot of pressure on themselves that this is so new and so much, but at the end of that day, you know, there was exhaling and like, wow, I mean, what I've done up till now, these students are using it. And in the past, you know, you would teach math and teach math, and you would think, didn't I just teach that to you? How come you're not using it? So, you know, there was real buy-in because we actually experienced that prior knowledge was being used in this very multi-step way, and that, of course, the last piece of this step is to explain it in your own words. So they actually have to write in words, narrative, how they got the answer. So really cool stuff, and I'm really excited about it. And I was even allowed by my teachers to say that they're excited as well, because they're very overwhelmed. Our IRIs are currently being given, and so far the ones in our at-risk population are showing an average of two levels of growth. So that's wonderful.
Can I ask you not to use some of the...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Our reading inventories, our reading tests. I'm sorry. So basically, the student reads to the teacher. The teacher ticks or kind of clicks off the words that they get and really is a... And then does some comprehension with them. And that's called a reading inventory, individual reading inventory. Excuse me. And so we're seeing so far about two, on the average, of a two-level gain in all of our at-risk kids. So that is really good news. We're still... We'll be doing that throughout this week and into next week as well. And we, as I told you before, we have a writing coach. Mrs. Behrens is now pushing into our second and third grades. And so we'll be analyzing these pieces of writing, and Mrs. Behrens will be front and center in that analysis because she's just convinced that she has created improved writers across the curriculum in second and third grade. And the teachers have, you know, really benefited from Mrs. Behrens's expertise. So great things in reading, writing, and math at Beacon. Now, the very best present you ever gave our teachers are their iPads. I asked the teachers in the last couple of days, just let me know what you're doing with these iPads, how you're using them. And my emails blew up in terms of what everybody's doing with them. Most importantly, I think I saw a theme of it's allowing teachers to prepare lessons at home and then... And also to track progress for their differentiated students. So they're able to create lessons at home and then plug them into these iPads so I can say, AAA, you use this iPad. BBB, use this iPad. So, you know, and this is just the start of this stuff. And so they've really taken off. There's also that dojo I've spoken of before, which is kind of a behavioral...
A what?
Okay. Classroom dojo. I don't know why it's called dojo, but what it is, is every student has a little character on this screen. So there's 30 characters, and the students know which one is them. And throughout the day, if they do a really good job on a math lesson, they get a little math star, a little math point. So it's not only academic, but behavioral. So the teacher's walking down the hall, or they had a great day with a sub in gym, so they all get a point. And it's, you know, there's this sound, blubloop, blubloop, so they know. Or it's not a blubloop, a more of a negative sound, and they know that something went on. It's not... It's not meant to embarrass students because it's not always up. So they kind of don't... They don't know who each other is, really. They just know who they are on the screen because they're little alien characters.
Yes. That's another delegate. Yes. When dojo, the origin is really in the video game world.
Oh.
And so that becomes that individual's characterization as they play video games.
Okay. Avatar?
An alter ego.
Yes. Like an avatar, yes.
Yes.
I'm old, okay? And my daughter's old, so we miss that whole thing. And so that's been really great. And then there's also the piece where this system downloads to smartphones. So I have parents who will call me and say, I'm looking at so-and-so's dojo, and he just had three negative... I need to speak to him. So it's like, you know, so I'm a little busy trying to hook up dojos with parents, but how amazing to have a parent or a parent who wants to talk to a child because they got an A on their spelling test, they just saw it on the dojo, please have them call me at lunch. So I'm doing a lot of memo keeping, but, you know, that is amazing stuff in terms of getting parents involved. And then, of course, you can imagine the communication when they get home from school because the parent's been clicked in all day. So I'm saying to you, parents out there with smartphones, get clicked into these dojos. And it really does, you know, motivate and also redirect when needed. So, oh, and I have one teacher using her iPad to record instructions for students who miss lessons. So when they come the following day, they get their lesson on the iPad. That's a first-grade teacher. These are the young ones. They are on fire. I have four important dates I want everyone out there and here to know. We have a roller skate, elementary roller skating party on Monday, January 27th, at The Great Skate from 5:30 to 7:30. Our elementary parent organization is the following day, Tuesday, January 28th, at 6:30. This meeting will be held at Beacon, so that in February, it will be at Tyrone. Double dress downs if you come. Right, Ms. Van? Black History event is Friday, February 21st, at the high school at 6:00. And we will be performing some poems, songs, and some African art. So I'm very excited. Our new art teacher, she's a keeper. Yeah, she's doing some amazing things. And the last one is the library. Primetime is coming up, February 24th, for six weeks. It's a family reading program with food and prizes, and we're really trying to target those non-traditional library visitors. So if you're a family who has never been to the library, please make February 24th a priority because you will, you know, you can win prizes, and your students will be... Will receive some really neat things, and there's some really great events. And bring all your preschoolers because there will be activities for the very youngest learners and readers. So please come on February 24th, 6 o'clock, at the Harper Woods Library. Any questions?
This skating event that you have on Monday?
Mm-hmm.
What are the details of that?
It's $3 per student. Parents get in free, and it's for Tyrone and Beacon students. However, if you have a cousin of that age, and we must be accompanied by an adult, so one adult can bring many students, but you can bring a cousin or, you know, of that age.
So it's an early evening event?
5:30 to 7:30.
Does that include the skate rental?
Yes. $3 skating for two hours plus your rental. Correct. And I don't believe that... I think it's just $3. If you bring your own roller blades, which they do allow, I think it's still $3.
Do they... Does it require any preregistration, or does it just show up?
No. Buy the ticket at the door.
Okay. Do you know the location?
Yes. It's at 13 and Hayes.
12.
Excuse me. 12 and Hayes. On Hayes.
Right on the northeast corner.
Right by McComb. Right? Right on Kiddy Corner.
It's just north of 12.
It's right on the corner, right behind Arby's Restaurant. You can't miss it.
Yeah, you see Arby's and... It's crazy. Can't miss it.
Your reading evaluation, which you said you've got a two-level gain on average?
Yeah, and with our at-risk kids.
With your at-risk kids. Over what period of time does that gain save?
From a quarter.
Okay.
From the last time.
Okay.
Right, from November, like the third week in November till now.
Okay.
So very exciting. Do you have something?
Yes. The math curriculum that you mentioned is now based on the State Council for Mathematics. Would you say it was more rigorous and relevant?
Very, absolutely more rigorous and absolutely more relevant. Yeah. I mean, like, I think I've said this, so stop me if I'm repeating myself, but I've sat in... I just finished my first round of evaluations at the end of December, and I sat in first and second grade math lesson that was an hour and 20 minutes. I was in there an hour and 20 minutes. They were not done yet. I would say that math lesson was probably going to go about an hour and 35 minutes, and those students were all highly engaged. The teacher was exhausted because this is something new for them. But, I mean, these students are moving from floor to table, back to the floor, individuals, you know, partnering them back to their tables. So it's a constant transition. So it's about, you know, it's manipulating and managing that movement. But once these teachers have that down, these students are not tired of math. I mean, we used to... I know as a teacher, 35 minutes and they're falling asleep of, you know, sit and get. So this is all about hands-on and being involved and active participation and engagement. Call me and come see it. It's really neat. Question?
Thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me. And now, Ms. Van, will you bring us up to date at Tyrone?
Good evening. Just a couple of minor things to mention. We did, as if you remember, back in December, I talked about the fact that Barnes &amp; Noble contacted us and wanted to target the Harper Woods, Beacon, and Tyrone schools for a book and possibly some of the middle school, for a book donation program that they had going through Barnes &amp; Nobles. They said they did it every year, and last year, we ordered all of our summer reading books through Barnes &amp; Noble. They were very helpful, so they decided to make Harper Woods schools as the organization they were going to be collecting books for. So we just heard from them because they collected all through December, and we just heard from them, and they have over 1,200 books that they're going to be donating for us. So we're working on getting them delivered because that's a lot of books. And we'll be dividing them up, and some will come to the middle school, some will go to Beacon, and some will go to Tyrone. But just by asking people who visited the store, would you like to make a book donation? Over 1,200 books that we are going to be getting. So that was a real big bonus. And our student council will be sending thank you cards and doing some of the PR things with that. But excited to get the books. Just trying to figure out how to get that many books over is... We're working on that. Our student council is also doing something. On January 27th through February 13th, the Penny for Patients. We actually... We set a goal this year of $800 because last year, we made just slightly under 700. So we're going to be setting a goal this year for $800. The winning class who participates in Penny for Patients, and for those of you who don't know what that is, the money goes back to fight a type of cancer. And the kids donate their pennies, and it can get competitive if you... It's got some rules. Like if you donate a certain amount, it can take away money from one class, but donate it to your class. And so, you know, they do these tallies and they keep track. And the class that raises the most money is going to win a catered lunch from Olive Garden, and it is... It really is an amazing lunch. They came last year, they set it all up, and it's Olive Garden food. It's not anything less than that. And then each class that raises $250, if they're not the winning class, then they're going to give them a Hungry Howie's lunch. So that's kind of an exciting time at Tyrone. So parents, if your kids are asking you for money to make a donation for their Penny for Patients, that is going on January 27th through February 13th. As you know, the end of the first semester is coming up this Friday. Report cards will be going home next Friday. So parents, I will do a phone dialer, but please be aware that your child will be bringing home the report card next Friday. We are trying something new. Letters are going to go home at the semester point, targeting students who we are concerned, who are not at the level that they should be, and letting parents know that we have some concerns. But we're trying something new this year, and I'm working with Mr. Clement, who runs our responsibility room. You know, he's doing a lot more mentoring and things with children this year and working on trying to get our kids' tardies to improve. But one of the things we're going to do now at the end of the semester is I'm going to give him the list of the students who we have concerns with, and it says in the letter that within the two weeks, they will be receiving a phone call to make an appointment. We're going to have parents come in, and we're training Mr. Clement on how to access and show parents how to access the MyStar, how to make sure the parents... Actually, make them come in, show them how to work it, show them how to access grades, show them the Weebly pages that the teachers have, make sure they know if their child... Who their child's math teacher is, who their child's reading teacher is. It's all going to be written down. He's going to physically show them with the webpage, as well as Study Island, make sure parents have their username and password, and just kind of talk to the parents of what they need to do to help, you know, bring their children grades, help them... Give them tools so they can help their child's grades improve. So we are going to target that at the end of the first semester. That is something we haven't done, so we're kind of excited to see how that goes. And he's excited. He's a little nervous. He's like, it's not hard to manipulate us. We're working with him on that. But, you know, I think that if we bring parents in and we really sit them down in... Because, you know, MyStar sounds easy to do, but for those parents who have never accessed it before, it can be a confusing thing. So we thought that face-to-face connection might help parents figure out a better way of making sure their child's getting all their homework, monitoring their grades. If they're behind, how to get them extra help. So I'll let you know how that goes. But that's going to start at... Not after this week, we'll have the names, and we'll start making appointments and bringing parents in. New program coming at Tyrone, really was the work of Mrs. Toffel Whitey and Mrs. Rogers, a fifth grade and sixth grade teacher. It's called Girls on the Run. And actually, last spring, the wellness committee that we have at Tyrone, we brought this to the front, and then we moved forward with it for this year. But it's basically a... It's a running program for girls. And last Thursday, I believe it was, they came in and they met with the girls at lunchtime. And a lot of girls showed up. It's really for interested girls, but we encouraged as many girls as we could to go see it. It's really a mentoring program and a self-help and how to have healthy thoughts about yourself and keep healthy lifestyles. But in the end, they'll be able to form the maximum amount we can form is 15 girls who will participate in the Tyrone running program. And they will actually go on... I think I wrote... Did I write the date down? It's in May, but they will... At May 18th, they will actually run a girls' 5K race with that. We're partnered with the YMCA through Lake Shore, and they are actually going to be getting, you know, sponsors to help raise money to cover the cost for this. There'll be a little bit that we pay for out of at-risk, but not much. The YMCA is actually going to cover the majority of it, so that it's a very minimal fee that the girls have to give in order to participate. And they... Like $10. And they said that just by making them do that, they have a little more commitment to the program. But it's a mentoring program, and the girls will eventually be running a 5K race. So again, this is a brand-new program to Tyrone, and I'll let you know. The first parent meeting is this Thursday at 3:50. Went home with the girls who were interested. They brought home that information. And if parents couldn't make it, there was, you know, contact the teachers if they still really want their child to participate. So like I said, it's a new program, just learning about it, but I think it's a great thing for some of our girls. There was a lot of interest in it, so I'll let you know how that goes. Semester ends, so we are beginning this week, next week. We are beginning our Scantron testing. We do it at the beginning of the year, at the midpoint of the year, and then in the spring. Scantron testing is a computerized program where we'll be looking at their reading and their math and seeing what type of growth they've had from fall till now. We'll also be administering our MEEP-like writing assessment, again, seeing what type of growth they've had, and then looking at students who might need targeted assistance, some extra pullout in math, or extra pullout in reading, or extra pullout in writing. And so those assessments are taking place this week and next week. In the past, it's been very hard to get them all in in a timely manner, but I'm hoping with the iPad cards because we can now utilize those. Before, we only had the computer lab, and we only had such a small amount of time that the computer lab wasn't being used. We now can access them on the iPad. Mr. Hopkins got that all hooked up, so we're hoping we'll be able to give those tests a little easier than we have in the past. So again, thank you for that. Any questions?
Those letters that you were mentioning that are going to go out, are they going to be sent home with the children?
The report cards.
Or are they going US mail?
They're going to be sent home with the report cards.
With the report cards?
Right.
Okay. So that's when parents should expect them if they're coming.
Yes. They'll be sent home stapled to the report card. We will have, you know, that the parent has to sign and return it, and Mr. Clement will be making contact with each and every one of those parents. So, you know, if a child fell in between the cracks and he hadn't quite called, and, you know, he hadn't quite given the report card, or she didn't have him sign it yet, or, you know, it'll eventually catch up because we are going to be meeting individually with all of those parents.
And you kept referring to, what is it that the parents can access?
There's MyStar, the parent connect.
What is that?
That is the ability for parents to look at their child's grades and see what type of grades they're getting, whether they have any missing or late work, whether they're passing their tests or not. It shows the current grade, you know, what they have in each class that they have it in. So, I mean, you know, so hopefully, if you see that your child has a lot of missing work and they're not doing very well, you can find that out before report card time. Anything else?
When's the... Do you have a date for the tin can auction?
Tin can auction is not being done anymore.
It's not?
No. They will not be doing tin can auction.
Oh, man.
Yeah. It was a tough decision with the combination of the two BPO and the TPA. There was a lot of discussion about that. It's just that it was decided between the two organizations. It just wasn't making the money that, with all the time and energy that went into it. So they will not be doing tin can auction.
Anything else planned in its place?
They've got a lot more smaller fundraisers, ones that are more manageable. All right? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Ms. Norwood. Middle school and high school.
Good afternoon, everyone. Just wanted to report for the secondary campus. I have a lot to talk about, so be patient with me. Mrs. Tyson's Future Thing class attended the DIA, and you all know our kids love to go on trips, so it was a really good experience for them. Just hearing the talk once they come back and let you know that they really appreciated it. Our middle school students were featured in a local newspaper for using technology. And again, thank you, Mr. Beadlewood, for leading that charge. When you have something in your hand that's tangible, you know, and you see kids who learn differently, they're really responding to that. So, and the middle school teachers really appreciate it. So just want to thank you for that. City Year always doing a phenomenal job. They came to me a couple of weeks ago. They want to implement a math initiative in the middle school where they're going to tutor kids in the morning and in the evening. So they're always coming up with something. They have a drama club that they started in the high school. So again, when I talk about City Year, I can't speak their praises highly enough because they just bring things to me that sometimes I'm not even thinking about. So knowing that our kids may need some extra help and knowing that they want to come early and late, it's really... They're really doing a good job. So that's for City Year. Vista Maria, our kids are taking advantage of all the services that Vista Maria has to offer. They took them skating, I want to say, last month. Our girls come early to practice a dance routine that they're going to do and present to the middle school. So parents, make sure you come out and see your kids. I got here one day at about 7:05, and they were already here practicing on the Harper Academy wing. So they come early and stay late, too. So they're excited about that. I got here one day at about 7:05 and they were already here practicing on the Harper Academy wing. So they come early and stay late too. So they're excited about that. In addition, Officer Will is going to do a step team. So I had the middle school girls come to me to tell me how can they raise money to buy uniforms. So they're already thinking about proposals to submit to me, because they said, "Ms. Norwood, when we see you in a hall, we just can't tell you things, you know, in walking, because you're walking so fast." So one of the girls said, "Well, let's just write it down and submit it to her in a proposal." So I kind of like that. So they're always thinking of, you know, just different things. And again, parents have really expressed just their satisfaction in what Vista Maria is doing, you know. So I can't thank Mr. Marino enough for what he's doing. He and Mr. Miller and his team, they're just doing a good job with the kids. Ms. Barnes and the social studies class, they had two bake sales, and she's just trying to teach the kids just, you know, just the different types of businesses, how to save money, how to spend money, how to make money. So they really liked that. Like I said, they did too. And the middle school and the high school are competing. Mr. Ross and I are very competitive, so the middle school kids are now making announcements. So I must say, Mr. Ross, I'm going to give you that one, you know, they're doing a good job at making, they're competing with the high school kids, so it's really fun. Oftentimes, when we do announcements, it's more so get to the high school. So this year, we wanted to kind of bring them in, and they're just really doing a good job. So thank you, Mr. Ross, for that. So, you know, my high school kids are going to get yours back. I'm glad Ms. Whitlow is here. I talk about Ms. Whitlow all the time, so, you know, I didn't know you were coming. So Ms. Whitlow is just like a second mother to her kids. She's going to always tell you the truth, sometimes you may not want to hear it, but she encourages the kids to get here on time. A lot of kids have perfect attendance. So they had t-shirts, and we're going to do a dress down. And one thing, again, you hear how the kids interact with each other. A lot of kids said, Ms. Whitlow, that although you may not know it, they like the fact that you kind of make sure that they get here, but also hearing them talk to each other, they want to get a t-shirt, they want a dress down. So again, we have a lot of kids with perfect attendance, and I want to make sure, parents, I want to thank, you know, you for that, because I know sometimes it can be challenging getting your kids, you know, up in the morning and you may have two and one is moving kind of slow. So, you know, it's a really good thing when you see tennis approving in the middle school. So thank you, Ms. Whitlow. Also, the basketball and cheerleading teams, they're having an exciting season, you know, they, the middle school kids, I think they're more competitive than the high school kids. So again, I don't want Mr. Ross doing with his middle school kids, I'm going to have to start getting back on my high school kids. Going into the high school, MME, ACT, work keys preparation is in full effect. We talk about it every day, all day. That's just what we're talking about on the secondary campus, making sure that our kids are on point for the test. We took our first practice test, second practice test, and the third practice test, I want to say, last week, and we've seen gains in every test. I'm really excited to see how we did on this third test. And we want to make sure that we're simulating the same testing environment that our kids are going to be in. And based on Ms. Lenhardt and Mrs. Patrice from Kaplan, she just sees less anxiety. And you all know, when you're anxious about things, you tend to make mistakes. So having them in that testing environment, she's starting to see them, you know, just being more calm, and I think that's a good thing. So I'm excited about the results that are going to come back. Mr. Mooney class did a public service announcement address, so they went around, Mr. Beedle Wolf, to several teachers and students, just talking about the importance of being on time. And just knowing that, I always say, you practice, the way that you practice is the way you're going to play. So knowing that if you come to school on time, you're going to go to college on time, you're going to go to your job on time. So seeing kids kind of run into class, now that lets you know that they're really starting to value the fact that you just have to be on time, the class is very important. So again, thank you for, you know, Ms. Whitlow for that. And the video, we're going to do some editing, so we can make sure that we show the video at the next meeting, so you all can see that. WC3 multimedia program, we had a huge turnout, huge turnout, standing room only over at the university, at the college. Ms. Pardo, Dr. Robinson, Ms. Thrasher, Ms. Gaddis did a great job putting that together. Again, we have a lot of techies, our kids, you know, they're techies. And we want to make sure that they take advantage of this program. And again, they get college credit for it. So it was a huge turnout. So we have pictures for that, and I'll show that to you all at the next board meeting. GM Schools of Excellence, United Way Mark Interviews, we're going to have those next week. This is a big deal. Forty top executives are going to come in and teach our kids interviewing skills. And as I shared with the kids today, we had a meeting second hour for the 12th grade students, just talking about the importance. You never know who's, you may see down the road, you know. So they're going to teach you how to look at, you know, people when they're doing the interviews and a strong handshake and how you're supposed to dress. And our students, I want to say about over 20, 25 students got summer jobs last year. So it's a big deal. And our kids are excited, they have their portfolios from last year, they're adding to it. So that's been the talk today, just about getting ready for the interviews next week. We're going to have the interviews for the 11th grade students in May. So we're making sure that, you know, we're trying to stay on point with our kids with their resumes and documents, so they can, you know, won't be scrambling and trying to rush. The robotics clubs, a lot of kids are excited about that. I was disappointed we had the snow days, because we had a huge event in Flint and we couldn't go, because we had the snow. And our kids were really looking forward to going. So right now, we have other events coming up, so the kids are still excited, but they really want to go to that event in Flint, you know. And again, we were closed, so hopefully, we don't have any more snow days, you know. You know, they're going to be excited about the next event. I am happy to announce that we have several students who are going to go to our DECA State and Career Development Conference in March. And I just wanted to make sure, I told them I was going to mention their names. DeCarla Strong, Camisha Flowers, Deshaun Williams, Montoya Hughes, Ebony Curry, and Chantelle Powell. They all won medals at the past event. And just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge, you know, what they do, you know, they were professionally dressed, you know, they came and everybody was excited about their medal, so now they're going to the state level. So that's a huge deal for Harper Woods. The big thing that I wanted to share with you all is, again, we won the Get School Challenge, where our kids won $5,000, and they can do what they want to do with it. I mean, we won the regional, and that's huge, you know, we beat out, you know, the region. So I want to make sure that I share that with parents. Ms. Beeman did a phenomenal job, just making sure that all of our kids have applied to college. And her next charge is making sure that all of the kids do their financial aid application. She's very competitive, I like that about her. She reminds me of me 30 years ago. But she has a lot of energy, and I like the fact that the kids respond to her. So to win a regional, you know, contest like that, you know, it's just phenomenal. So I want to make sure that the parents knew, thank you for, you know, working with your students on that, I mean, your kids on that, but it's just, it's a big thing, you know. And the Bully movie, we have the Bully movie that's going to be here February 3rd, I believe, Ms. Whitlow. Parents, you can come out and see it. It's going to be shown to the middle and high school students, and in the evening to parents. And this is a nationwide epidemic with bullying. We want to make sure that, you know, if kids are being bullied, come and talk to me, you know, come and talk to Ms. Whitlow, they can talk to anyone. And we have actually someone who's going to speak to that, one of our students, and share more with you all about that. We're going to also take our students off-site to go see Broken Mirrors, it's another movie about bullying. So, you know, we're really making sure that, you know, we're proactive, that we're not going to be reactive to it, because this is very serious. And we had the opportunity to host the 19th Annual Roundball Classic here for four days. Huge event, you know, it's been going on, like I say, for 19 years. We had high schools from the state of Michigan, but also from Illinois too. And just to see the turnout from people from everywhere just coming in, the gyms, both gyms, middle and high school, was just packed. And one of the things that everyone said, they talked about how beautiful our facilities were, but just how welcoming we are. And one thing that my staff and the parents, I want, you know, I'm about customer service. I'm about, hey, how you doing, you know, come on in, because that's very important. And to know that you have outsiders coming in commending your staff, you know, that makes me feel good, because I want to make sure that parents, student, everybody knows that, you know, Harper Woods, we're a family, just come in, you know, and enjoy the experience. Also, you know, going back into sports, the boys and girls basketball teams are doing a good job. And Mr. Gaberson, our math teacher, he is the wrestling team coach, and they came in second place, and I wanted to make sure that I gave them a shout-out too. So again, parents, everyone, come to the secondary campus, enjoy the experience, we welcome you. So, any questions? I know I had a lot to talk about.
Yes, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Since the MME test is coming up, I think it's in March.
March, yes.
Is there anything the parents should be doing to help their child?
Yeah, parents, make sure that you focus on helping your students to study. Ms. Lenhardt, again, she's very, she does a lot in class. We want to make sure that the parents are making sure that your kid's studying, that they're getting enough rest, especially before the test, that they have a lot of work that they should be focusing on too. And just following up, making sure that the parents are following up with their kids, that they're staying on point with the test, because it's going to be very challenging. But luckily, we've taken these three practice tests, so the kids, and we're taking it in the classroom, we're setting up everything like it's the test. So they shouldn't be anxious, you know, they should be comfortable. And I know that being anxious, being nervous really can be a negative, you know, effect to, so we're making sure that we're staying on point, just keeping them calm and keeping them focused, you know, on the concepts. And the teachers are really going into the data, and you all hear me say this all the time, data is driving everything that we do. So making sure that wherever Tanya may be weekend, that teacher is individualizing their instruction to help that, and that's very important, to help the students. You about to say something else?
If I could, Mr. Rabado, students have access to an online ACT prep program?
Uh, not, not through the district.
The state didn't continue that pilot program?
Yeah.
Okay, pardon me.
There is a library program, I forget the dates.
Well, it's on the 20th.
And isn't that, but isn't that online with the state of Michigan? Some kind of training, ACT training, and it's an online state of Michigan program?
Oh, you know, it says we'll guide you through the Michigan Electronic Library's Practice Test website, but it was yesterday.
Let's find out more about that, Mr. Rabado. I want to make sure that kids have access to some of these practice materials at their home, and they are out there, and they are in the public domain. So let's make sure that we get that information to our kids and to our parents as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Beedle. Ryan.
And I think ACT itself does have online.
Mr. Rabado, I'll give you this, so you have that look of information from the library.
Can you just tell me what the Get School Challenge is, what that consists of?
The Get School?
If I could, that's 9.0 on the agenda, so we'll talk a little more specifically about that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
And if you're disappointed in having those snow days, there's only one person in this room that's responsible.
You know, I just really wanted to be here, and I was just so distraught that, you know, that it kept snowing and it was so cold, and, you know, I just really wanted to be here, so.
That's good leadership for tomorrow. Well done.
And you're teaching me ways of working.
And Mr. B, the Roundball Classic, is that just a one-year contract, or are they coming back next year?
I have met with them, they are, have expressed interest in returning, although nothing yet has been finalized. If the board wants to kind of provide some direction in that regard, I'd be happy to hear your thoughts.
Okay, moving to 8.0 on our agenda, which is a student spotlight. And Simone Miller is going to have something to tell us. You want to introduce, make the introductions?
I will, Mr. Selvern, thank you. Simone, welcome. We're really glad that you're here tonight.
Hi, Ms. Miller.
As you are aware, we're going to be presenting the anti-bullying movie, Bully, on Monday, February 3rd. We're going to be presenting it throughout the day to all of our secondary students. It is intended for a somewhat more mature audience. That evening, beginning at 5 o'clock, we're asking our parents to come on out. We'll have a light reception. We understand it's the dinner hour, so it won't be, quote, "a full-fledged dinner," but we'll understand that it's time when people need, you know, some light refreshments, if you will. And the movie itself will start promptly at 6 o'clock. And bullying is one of those issues that we sometimes talk about wraparound support or wraparound reaction. And we know that sometimes bullying and relationship issues start in the school and then impact the homes and the neighborhoods. And we know that sometimes bullying issues start in the homes and/or the neighborhoods and then impact the school environment. And in either case, we're about everybody winning, and neither of those scenarios provides a situation whereby everyone is winning. And, you know, it's a serious issue, and it's an issue that, in my opinion, potentially touches all walks of life. And I'll give you maybe an example that's real relevant today. The, in my opinion, inappropriate comments that one NFL football player decided to make after the games on Sunday, disparaging one of his fellow competitors. Instead of demonstrating good sportsmanship and saying, "Great game," as the victor, instead had to disparage that individual's talents and/or level of performance. And in my opinion, that was a form of bullying. And then notice how that individual felt the need to respond and defend himself, and now here comes this ongoing escalation. And while that's, you know, certainly other attacks can be more aggressive than that, when a student feels emotionally harmed and disparaged and the need to respond or to react, that's a situation of bullying. And so, parents, we're really looking forward for you coming to come out on February 3rd, so we can all understand this issue better. And Simone, my understanding is, is that you've seen this film before and that it's had a direct impact on you. Tell us a little bit about that, please.
Hi, I'm Simone, I'm a junior. And I saw Bully the year it came out, so 2012, at my previous school, and I was like the main one, I was like, "Hey, let's go see Bully, maybe it can change us." So we went to go see it, and it was heart-wrenching, like, to know that, like, for instance, there was like a 12-year-old that took his life, because he was scared to speak out and people were just picking on him. And like, we left the movie and like, you couldn't leave or watch it without a draw. So I was just thinking about it, and someone was like, "Hey, you should email or reach out to somebody in that movie." So I did some research and I found Mr. Smalley, and I emailed him, just telling him that I'm sorry for the loss of his son, and that I would try to do whatever possible to end bullying, even though it wouldn't be that much, because it was just me. No matter, like, what the impact was, I mean, it was going to do something to help change it. So I've been talking to him every now and then, and Ms. Whitlow mentioned that we were going to be watching it. So I was like, maybe I should reach out. And I reached out after a student committed suicide. So I was like, well, bullying has to stop, especially if someone's taking their life. So I told Ms. Whitlow about it, and we've been getting in contact with him. And I can say that the movie is like a great impact on you, like, it makes you think about things, and it like shows you that words do hurt. And I know they say sticks and stones may hurt my bones, but like, words will never hurt me. Yeah, that's not right, it's not true, because words stick with you forever. And like, bullying has to stop, because, you know, innocent people who could do something for our world is being taken, because they don't meet, I guess, society or what they think they have to, to be, you know, normal.
So I think I hear you're telling us that you believe that this movie will be beneficial to teenagers who would view it?
Yes.
And what do you think about adults? Is it going to be valuable for them as well?
They can, like, it's kind of educational, so they can know, like, maybe I should talk to my child more to see if anything is happening. And if they say, "Oh, everything was fine," maybe something wasn't fine, and they're just brushing it off, so I don't have to talk to, like, the administrators or something and make a big deal. But in actuality, if the parents do what they can teach their children and educate them that, you have to stop talking about people, because if you find it funny, other people don't, and they take that to heart, and you never know what they're going to do.
Very well said. Very well said.
Do any board members have any comments or questions they might want to share with Simone? No, just from my perspective, thank you. If anybody else has anything they want to ask you.
You've done a great job.
Thank you.
Simone, we appreciate your leadership. It's one of the things we're really working to cultivate, is student leadership. And I just think how powerful that you would stand before the Board of Education as a student leader and say, "This is going to be good for my classmates, those I go to school with every day, and I think it's going to be good for the adult community as well." We really appreciate your coming out tonight. Who's here with you?
My auntie.
Great, and can you name it for us?
Jemel McHalep.
Nice to have you here, Ms. McHalep. Thank you for coming out to support Simone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Simone. And just for clarification, when Mr. Beedle refers to the secondary school, for those who don't know that term, it means the middle school and the high school. And everybody, all the parents from both those schools are encouraged to attend. And that brings us to 9.0, which are district recognition, the first of which is 9.1, the Get School College Challenge, regional winner. And that's, I think, Mr. Beedle made a reference to that a little bit earlier. You want to tell us what that's about?
Well, Mrs. Norwood, if you'll rejoin the podium, I think you can speak to it a little more specifically. It's an activity that we undertook in direct support of our commitment to cultivating a strong college-going culture within our schools.
I was just saying, and as you're saying, yeah, and that's pretty much what it is, just trying to cultivate and implement and get the kids to think about college. We're trying to create a college-going culture. So just being, you know, I'm kind of competitive, so when Ms. Beeman told me about it, you know, I made sure that I had all the little flyers in my office, and we had them all around the school, because we wanted to make sure that, you know, we won. And the kids, they're competitive too. So knowing that all of our kids have applied to college, that's a phenomenal thing. A lot of schools can't say that. And to know in our region that we won, it's just a big deal. But not only that, just for, you know, the recognition and for the money, making sure that our kids know how important it is to go to college, to any secondary option, you know, to go to universities, and just seeing them get excited about it. And now asking about financial aid, now asking about more scholarships, now asking about, you know, other things that they can do in relation, you know, to college. For example, I'm in a sorority, so they're asking me about sorority life. So they're really getting excited, and, you know, you know, a lot of my friends didn't even know about this program. So when I talk about it and tell them that we won because I'm just, you know, want to let them know, you know, I'm excited. So again, it's just creating a college-going culture, and when you have competitions, a lot of our kids are very competitive, and to know that they won, now they're trying to think of something else that they can do, you know, to win. And I think they're trying to win this financial aid, the money for financial aid, so I don't know if you want to elaborate.
This was part of College Application Week that I think was occurring across the state?
Yes, yes. I think it was, I want to say 131,000 schools across the United States. So I don't know if that number's right. I think it's in the packet, but I think it was that many schools.
Yeah, I do recall as well. We took 11th in the nation in this challenge and 1st in the Michigan or the Detroit metropolitan region. And as a result of that, again, our kids earned...
$5,000.
Now, we wish it was each.
No, but, yeah, but, you know, but $5,000 if we did that.
It's $5,000 that they can make some decisions in terms of positively impacting the school and positively impacting the college-going environment within the school.
And they're already talking about what they want to do for the community. So it goes to show, you know, our kids are always thinking about how they can help someone else, you know. Oftentimes, you know, teenagers can be self-centered, but I love our seniors. Our seniors are leaders in this building, and when they're thinking about helping families, helping the communities, and not just thinking about themselves, I mean, that's a good thing, you know.
And what staff members led in support of this?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Beeman. She's our college career counselor and Mrs. Thrasher. And Ms. Beeman, like I said, she did a lot of the lead work. She has a great relationship with the kids, and she just, you know, she just graduated from college, you know, not too long ago. So I think she relates to the kids, you know, and they just like her energy, her positive energy, and letting them know that, you know, you really need to do this. And they responded, and we won, you know, so.
So for the board, I remind you that Ms. Beeman is our onsite near peer, as Principal Norwood just said, a recent college graduate herself. And the sponsoring organization is called the Michigan College Access Network. Mr. Keen, you'll probably remember that from three years ago at the then Community Council, now Champions Council. This is the second year we've had a full-time Michigan College Access Network staff person here, working full-time every day with our kids. And just last week, State Superintendent Flanagan was reacting to the College Application Week that had just concluded, and he was celebrating. But as part of that communication, he has well indicated that he had just learned about the Michigan College Access Network, and he had learned that only 25% of the schools in our state even today are providing that resource to their college-bound students. And for us, this is our second year of implementation. So, you know, only 25% are doing it, and it's year two. And I think and hope that it's something that we'll be able to, you know, to continue to offer to our students in the foreseeable future. So, pretty cool stuff.
Yeah, one thing about, yeah, Ms. Beeman, she's a Harper Woods resident. So, you know, she sees the kids, so when they're, even when they're not in the school, she's still working with them off-site and talking to them. So she's, you know, she inspires them. And, you know, I wish I could clone her. I tell her that all the time because she reminds me of me, you know, 20-something years ago. So, you know, I'm impressed by her and what she's bringing, you know, to the secondary campus.
So just to clarify, we won 1st in the region...
Correct.
11th in the nation.
Yes.
And every single 2014 graduate applied to a college?
Yes.
They have to.
Well, I understand that. And who funds those college applications?
So it depends. In some instances, the students are. But remember that most of our students would meet those standards, if you will, that they're able to get fee waivers and to apply at no cost.
Yep. I used to be a formal counselor, and that's exactly how it works, you know. They usually just waive, it's like a $20 to $5 fee, and it's usually waived.
Usually more than that.
Oh.
Let me tell you, as a parent of two recent college students, it's more than $25 for an application.
Mm. I'm old, it's gone up.
Do we, so does this program, does this help the kids, does it guide them through that application process, how to actually sit down and fill out an application?
She does that with them. She does. And what she tries not to do, she doesn't want it to enable them so they don't, you know, know how to do it on their own, but she kind of lets them know. And then oftentimes, I see kids, they'll come in my office and use my computer to do stuff. So it's not like she's trying to take them hand by hand. She's trying to encourage them, to inspire them so they can start doing things on their own, you know. So, yeah, she does help them to make sure that everything's okay.
And do we have, do we have anything in place to help the kids with those essays that most of the colleges require, an essay?
In our advocacy period. So we have advocates for the high school, and they get a lot of help in their advocacy classes. For example, for the mock interviews that they're doing next week, they're doing that in the advocacy classes where they're doing the cover letter, resumes, and working on things of that nature. So advocacy class is really helping them out a lot, and in English courses, too.
And we held, or we have scheduled a financial aid workshop as well?
Ms. Thrasher's working on that now. Actually, they had, I call her the tip lady. I don't know if anyone knows the tip lady. I've been knowing her for about, she was here today, all day. So Ms. Thrasher's working on that, you know, right now.
I've scheduled.
Yes. Okay, any other?
Thank you. And that brings us to 9.2, which is recognition of the Harper Woods Board of Education. And I'm going to turn this over to you, Mr. Beedle.
Thank you, Mr. Selber. So traditionally, in the state of Michigan, January is School Board Recognition Month. And it sometimes feels a little awkward for me. Gosh, you know, how nice it is to tell your bosses in the role of a superintendent what a great job that they're doing. Yeah, it's a little strange.
Just before your evaluation.
You know, the timing is beautiful as well. I wasn't going to bring that up, but, but if you just think about it, I really do believe that we are a district on the move. You know, we just spent, whatever it was, a half-hour hearing about the great things that are occurring in each of our schools, the great opportunities that are being afforded to our students. We're a district on the move. And that doesn't happen by accident. It takes a commitment. It takes a collective vision. It was so interesting to me to hear Principal Norwood talk about how welcoming the district was perceived to our guests. I can remember a time, two or three years ago, when it was being suggested that we weren't welcoming, not only to guests, but to families who were, you know, investigating us or considering us for enrollment. And I do believe that we are a district on the move, and I absolutely know that that is, to a significant extent, attributable to the leadership and the commitment that this Board of Education has. We don't say it as much as we used to, but it's still on the back of those placards, "Is it good for kids?" And I know that that's where the board's commitment is, and that's where their heart is. And so Wayne Risa, their Board of Education, passed a resolution in late December about the recognition of local school board members. And it kind of resonated with me. I'm not going to read the whole thing, and I'm shuffling the order a little bit. But when you adopt resolutions, there's a lot of whereases and wherefores and outcomes and all of those kinds of things. One of the whereases, we're honoring local boards of education in part why? Because every day, local school boards do the most important work of their communities, that of educating their youth. And I thought, wow, what a powerful statement. I'd never thought about it in quite that way before. And these are different political times. And so one of the other whereases speaks to how local control continues to be of great importance to this Board of Education, and how sometimes in these political times, they have to fight for that local control or fight to maintain that local control. And I know that board members have been in Lansing. I know that board members are attaining training classes, all of which takes their time and represents their commitment. And so like the Wayne Risa Board of Education, we as well would simply like to say thank you to our Board of Education. And so in your packets, you have certificates that read in part, "Your leadership is central to creating a contemporary learning environment," boy, didn't we hear a lot about that tonight, "across the Harper Woods School District. Your investment in providing our students and staff the resources necessary to meet the needs of each student establishes a district committed to continuous improvement and excellence in our outcomes." And to me, I think that statement says a lot about your leadership and your commitment. As is traditional, we have a small gift in recognition of your service and your leadership. I forget the exact salutation, but I believe it's something in the neighborhood of, "Proud to be a school board member." And in that contemporary way, and maybe this is a little corny, but I think it's illustrative nonetheless, in the old days, it would just be a pen. But today, it's a pen with, now I'm stuck with the word. Thank you. It is a pen and a stylus that will control an iPad and/or control a cellphone and so forth. Why? Because technology is that pervasive, and that is a huge component of the commitment of this Board of Education. So we thought that we would help you be more adept in your technological use as well. Thank you, Harper Woods Board of Education, for your leadership, your service, and your commitment to Harper Woods schools.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beedle, and thank you, board. That brings us to 10.0, which is public participation regarding action items. We only have one action item tonight, but if any member of the public wishes to address us concerning that, please step up. Seeing none, we'll move on to 11.0, which is that action item. Specifically, it's the acting administrator stipend. And that is found at page 52 of your packet. And we have a recommended motion that reads as follows, "That the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to negotiate with the Harper Woods Educational Association and the Harper Woods Administrative Association letters of understanding establishing a stipend for teaching or administration staff who assume interim or acting administrative roles for a period of five days or more." Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Support?
Support.
Mr. Beedle, you want to give us a little background on this?
Really just about a very modest investment in recognition of the talent that we have locally. Occasionally, we have a need to staff a position on an interim or an acting basis. In fact, in our transformational model, it is encouraged that we support career pathways of this type and give individuals in your employ the opportunity to experience new roles, new responsibilities, so that they can consider whether or not they would want to pursue those on a full-time basis, and if so, to have the experience of this interim or acting, you know, period of leadership. So monetarily, it would be a very modest amount, but certainly some recognition of staff members who would step up, assume additional responsibilities, and keep our schools and our district running at a high level.
It's true that we pretty much are just formalizing a past practice. I mean, this is what we've been doing.
It is something that has been done. I haven't always done it consistently, and so I'm asking for the authorization to do it on a consistent basis.
And if you noticed, up in the upper right corner, there's a numbering system. We're going to begin a numbering system for motions and resolutions. And we're just going to number them in order annually. So...
2014, January, and then just the number. Correct. Yeah, and so the numbering will continue throughout the whole year, and we'll have the month demarcation to just help us, you know, narrow in a little more specifically.
I think that's good. They'll be sequentially numbered.
Yeah, we won't start over every month, right. It's just the whole year. I think that's a great idea. When Mr. Selber brought it forward, I thought it was as well, and pretty easy to do. So, nice suggestion.
Any other discussion concerning the motion itself? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion passes 6-0. Brings us to board items, which are subcommittee reports, if any, from any of the committee chairs that may or may not have something to comment on. Anybody have anything? Policy needs to get together. We've got some, some suggested policy changes from Neola Semiannual. We need to get to those and get those in place.
Mr. Selber, just for your awareness, we did contact Neola and Mr. Polka today so that those dates could be scheduled.
I saw that. Received a copy of that email that we reached out for some dates from him. Any other committees? Okay, hearing none. That brings us to 13.0, which is the report of the superintendent.
Well, I've spoken a lot tonight, so I'll keep my comments short. But this is a very important week in the school calendar. For our elementary schools, it is the end of the second marking period. And for our secondary schools, the middle school and the high school, it's final exam week. And so obviously, that being said, this is a time where it's very important that students are taking advantage of those opportunities to finish those marking periods strong, get those last assignments in well-done, and move those overall academic performance levels in the positive direction. And so as I say that, probably everybody nods their heads and says, "Absolutely, that's what it is that we should be doing, and we've done that before, and we are ready and committed to do that again." But here's the rest of that story. We've kind of learned recently, as we've gotten better at analyzing data at shorter timeframes, that our kids are making those big pushes. They are making those big investments to close those marking periods and those semesters strongly. And then when they do that, they go, "Phew, got it done." In meantime, the first marking period, excuse me, the first week of the following marking period has already gone by. And now they're a little bit behind, and we find that they're in somewhat of a catch-up mode. So my caution and my message is, let's just not allow that to happen. Not only do we need to end the first semester and the second marking period strongly, we also need to begin the third marking period and the second semester equally as strongly. And so my message, there is no letdown. It's full speed ahead each and every day, each and every week, each and every marking period in Harper Woods schools. I look forward to our students ending the first semester strongly and starting the second semester strongly as well.
Keep your foot on the gas.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Beedle. That brings us to 14.0, public participation. If any members of the public wish to address the board, please step up. Seeing none, brings us to matters of interest to board members. Any board members have anything they wish to comment on?
Just be aware, if you're sending anything out, stamps raise in price to 49 cents, January 26th, which is Sunday. Get into the post office and buy your forever stamps for the current rate of 46 cents.
I like forever stamps, that does help.
You know, I have to tell you, I just found a pen buried somewhere that I probably bought two or three years ago, and I was like, "Oh, wow."
Forever stamps?
Forever stamps.
Yeah.
They're still good.
Well, the other thing is the snow globes at the library. Anybody who absolutely loves snow, and I do, but I am getting a little tired of it, they're going to make snow globes Monday, January 27th at 6 o'clock. So you'll learn how to make your own snow globe in a bottle. All material will be supplied. 6 o'clock, Monday, January 27th.
Anyone else? I'd just like to offer congratulations to the high school for the Get Schooled College Challenge being the regional winner and placing as high as they did nationally. That's phenomenal. Congratulations to the deck of students for moving on. I think the wrestling team deserves congratulations. And I'm probably missing somebody, but I can't think of who else. And just, everybody stay warm. Nope? Okay.
Thank you, Simone, for your pep talk, company.
Indeed. We're adjourned. 8:14.